This meeting of the Planning Board of the City of Elizabeth will now begin in order. This meeting of the Planning Board of the City of Elizabeth can begin this Thursday, the 7th day of November of the year 2013, as newly advertised reports for the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJHSA, ten to four, H six, as a special scheduled meeting. Publishers are to be added to meetings scheduled. Notice that this meeting is included to install ledger on Friday, January 18, 2013. The notice of the case is included also published to install ledger at least 10 days before today. Martin, please call the roll.
Councilman Lawman.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Brown. Here. Commissioner Prabawas. Commissioner Dunnet.
Here.
Commissioner Chaffalos.
Here.
Secretary Attorney Ervin.
Here.
Commissioner Brigera. Here. Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ross. Here. Chairman Haas.
Here. Would everyone rise please for this? I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight is the minutes of the October 3, 2013 meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion approved. Motion by Councilman Goldman. Second. Second by Commissioner Shalhoub. Martin, please call the roll.
Councilman Lawman.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown. Say. Commissioner Dunnet.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffalos.
Aye.
Secretary Attorney Ervin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brigera.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ross. Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Just to call your attention if there's anyone here to hear the case of Rosemont Memorial Park, which is P 0313, 11-9, Ample Lane, that will not be heard tonight, is adjourned through December 15. No further notice required of the applicant. So if you're here for that hearing, you will not be heard tonight. Resolutions P 1113, 686, 762, Captain Capes and Rowan, Prologis, LP. May I have a motion to accept the resolution? Chairman, move on. Secretary Ervin. Second.
Anywhere.
Second. Seconded by Councilman Goldman. Martin, please call the roll.
Councilman Lawman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunnet.
Aye.
Commissioner Chaffalos.
Aye.
Secretary Attorney Ervin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brigera.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ross.
Say.
Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Matter of the case application, P 1213, decided October 3, 688, Main Moon Avenue, the Elizabeth Howdens, our name. I have a motion to accept the resolution. It's voted, voted accept by Mr. Shalhoub. Second. Seconded by Councilman Goldman. Please call the roll.
Councilman Lawman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brigera.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunnet.
Aye.
Commissioner Brigera.
Aye.
Commissioner Chaffalos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ervin.
Aye.
Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Okay, a resolution, rest of the resolutions, a matter of P 0812, October 3, it is 29-35, Systre, Alzira, Montu, and motion. Motion. Okay. Commissioner Dunnet. I heard a voice. Seconded by Secretary Ervin.
Councilman Lawman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brigera.
Aye.
Commissioner Brigera.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunnet.
Aye.
Commissioner Chaffalos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ervin.
Aye.
Chairman Haas.
Aye.
More resolutions, a resolution, special resolution for the appointment of a special conflict council. Whereas there exists a need for the services of a special conflict council to represent the City of Elizabeth Planning Board for the purpose of hearing applications directly by the board or the board attorney. You have that resolution before you, can I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Councilman Goldman. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Chaffalos. Everyone present in the board of the board?
Yes. Councilman Lawman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brigera.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunnet.
Aye.
Commissioner Chaffalos.
Aye.
Secretary Attorney Ervin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brigera.
Aye.
Commissioner Moreno.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ross. Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Okay, first hearing tonight is P 1412, 917, 931, South of Moore Avenue. Mr. Biskey. Do you have any sort of members of the board?
Hello, Mr. Tom.
Is the previous one qualified as a tall, part of the testimony? I remember where you're standing, sir. Counselor, please, where are you? Is the previous one?
Just really good here, relying upon her other part, or you? As Chairman, so there is a note that the board has a court tonight, buys plans as of October 18, 2013. Also, submitted by the article, specifically with the fire officials, please. Fire official.
There's something about the disciplines here.
I have a lot of them. Copies of minutes of reading with Mr. Biskey, the fire official. A gap study, verified by Charles, who stated, "Your duty is to request advice of the gap study." Stormwater by lack of calculation, verified by Mark, who are the meeting. And a driving noise study, dated October 17, 2019, to us. Today, this morning, we did receive the report from Mr. Megga. And Saturday, I received the other outside agents receiving reports. Mr. Paul recommended to be in a fire office. To explain what changes have been made to our plan, I have a time with Mr. Paul. The previous one involved. Mr. Paul, could you explain to board members what changes have been made to plans since the last year?
Sure. We went through the previous report from our consultants, item by item, and made changes to the... Providing details of input calculations for the extension system. It provided a note saying that any mechanical equipment under roof would be screened from sight. We met with the fire official and provided, as they say, with the fire connection. And from building. We also, this is done beyond a note of reach five. Auto. A sprinkler system is only required in a beautiful space, but we are intended to provide a full sprinkler system throughout building. With the fire department sign missing connection, it doesn't include the fire department sign missing connection. In addition, the building would be provided with an E C access system here, advanced box. And the building would be provided with an E C repair maintenance. This was a result of our meeting with the fire official.
And you see it. And you see it, boss.
And you see it, and you see it, boss. And you see it, and you see it, boss. In addition to that, we provided driveway profile.
Can you hear me, sir?
That's right. That was standard.
Provided driveway profiles, as requested by our consultants. We also provided profile of the sanitary sewer connection and files of the regular facility. We also had some additional landscaping at the corner of the lots. And made some change on corrections, type of graphic colors. For example, the evergreens iron path wanted to be more than twelve feet in height. And the serious trees would be seven feet in height. In addition, we changed the lighting, the side lighting, made it halve, that's similar lighting details. And we added a note to the legislative plan saying that all plans should go to the standards of the American Association of National Security. We also provided the exit door from the car wash tunnel into the sales area, if you look at the floor plan.
Less than possibility, by where the construction arrived, she talked. Page 6. What's the purpose of that door?
I think the load of the core was on the pass and the delivery had connected to the board. It's many people requested that it would be included to provide access, higher access to anyone from the car wash tunnel. But the car wash tunnel only need in operation when the doors are open, the door is open. So anyone will be there when the open is open. But anyway, for safety reason, we decided to include the doors, requested by the neighborhood. And, pardon, someone, neighborhood service. Here. We also introduced a thirty-foot loading and unloading area to be installed in, but through the outside and... It is due. The purpose of that loading area is to avoid the need for delivery vehicle to the site. The owner has hopefully decided to move the E C road, act as a neutral avenue for delivery. So it could be a spot, mail truck, we'll look for the building as five foot, high five five E C road. And be able to drive on E C road and bring in the mail or packages down on the ground through a gate on the E C road. And directly into the.
How wide is the center line, my friend? The road is fifty feet. How much of it do you take near where your real problem is?
That would be about eighty feet, because it's a difficult part of space.
Even after why, what's through this picture, through this drawing, if my eyes are obscured, maybe back there to the lane, travel lane?
No, that's a part of the, the charging for the exit. Where did we do this to the property? So, we, uh, hoping to be, we, we, happen now.
And there's parking on that street, man?
Uh, this means also the intersection, first, first, equals the intersection of white and solid. We're really not taking away any parking that could be very responsible to me. It just seem to be designated that it's a voluntary.
So the loading zone begins, how far is that, Mr. Davis?
It's within fifty feet. So the parking, then, potentially, that was stop sign. Parking. I don't have an exact mention, but within the fifty footer. Read some comments that I believe on our report regarding the fact that the ramp and the gate is only eighteen foot wide and the four month, uh, big enough to provide access to fire department trucks. That is not being intended, this was intended for delivery. Or even Mr. Kristin during our meeting said that we would never bring a truck to the site. They would bring a smaller, they have other ways. So we thought, if he brings us that providing a gate, will make a little issue for the fire department as well to get anything basically.
I draw my own, Mr. Davis.
Sorry, sir.
Our traffic expert, Mr. Davis, who addressed loading zone, maybe things on your part.
Sure. Along the E C road, if I recall correctly, and I've seen this in so many different directions. There's fences, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a fence.
So there will be an opening in the fence, a gate, a gate, which are two lanes for the G U P S driver to open?
Yeah, it would not be locked. It's just like a badge, right?
And there will be a gate, a vehicle to drive through?
No, not intended for a vehicle to drive through.
So why are the locks closed?
The lock box is for the fire department to have a key always available to help accommodate the box.
Key to what?
And the key to the buildings inside the box.
Key to the building. Previous times that I've heard about lock boxes, it's usually a key to a gate.
No, that's a key to building. Well, it could also be a key to a gate, that's.
But you just have to, just let the fire department come through there, right?
But that gate would not be, it would not be locked, the gate would just have a symbol on it. The lock box is for building, fire department, western lock box, for building, it's easy. During our review, I also, we also, uh, accepted the fact that we need two barriers. One is to put the parking spaces that are eight point five feet wide. And the other one is the ten foot safety aisle differently required as the two barriers were by the base.
Sorry, sir.
I believe there is a design rule, but I do have a record.
When Mr. ... When the attorney is speaking and you're sitting there, I don't think I can speak, I just hear words.
I, I think it was a variance or a design error.
There was a?
A variance or a design error.
And that's fine.
The plans are to show no other part, right?
Oh, yes, yes, we will follow. On page eighteen, at the bottom of the notes, it says side frame painting, right next to it, above the wall painting. It said no left turn sign.
Now, uh, this official's meeting also getting to the night.
Tell me this correct, is we have a lane to be, where it says sign no left turn. And that sign will be facing out to South Elmore. So someone driving, I guess, eastbound on South Elmore, would then see that.
That's over, that's in.
That's basically the path, I don't know. This sign will face.
So by the sign person is already making left turn, it's on the wrong side of the line. On the wrong side of the line, if I can see my angle. That, that sign in there is over.
There goes a sign, there's a sign.
So if you stop on the side of the gate to attempt to turn, you will definitely see the sign in the road.
I, I'm here. Sign in the road. I was ready to turn into the driveway, but left turn, seeing from which would go down. And I'm gonna see a sign that's now behind my shoulder. I observed the right thing, that sign was on.
We, we do also have a sign on the other side of the road.
That's different. And that's.
As the traffic, how do you handle that?
That's facing. That's a part of the exit, you mean.
That's that sign.
That's across coming down.
This is lady, uh, the sign would face, this sign would face west.
The whole time we're turning back, but it's not looking.
Okay. Too much. It's going to be, this sign will face out, this sign will face west. This one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
One, by the end, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay, continue. Any other reference to any of your?
I just want to ask for a question. And also remove the notation for your conference card.
Oh, yeah, pardon, yes, yes. That was something that I added from my experience with this type of car wash, I think, of opening, of this.
Absolutely, you would also like that. No. So you're saying that?
That was not the only suspension, mind you.
So that's, that's all?
Yeah.
Now, I do want to ask one question from Mr. Megga's report regarding illumination.
Sorry, sir.
One question from Mr. Megga's report regarding the illumination. So we have a question in the illumination level of one of the lights in the... Light in there. How it managed to have a certain light handle up, but going one way or the other, still another? Could you relate that, Martin?
Uh, sure. I mean, I looked through for perhaps some type of graphic letters that couldn't find it. The fact of the matter is that we do plan to solve shields, protective shields. When we solve shield, you can reflect the light back and away from the neighbors, from residential neighbors. Like I said, do have the shield for the mark. The illumination pattern reflects out to be a little bit different than the ones that do not have a shield.
I'm surprised you said that all lights will comply with the regular standard.
Absolutely, yes.
Now, there's also a question regarding the empty space to the rear apartment. Where we moved over the trench, move on. Could you explain, respond to Mr. Megga's comment, how then the board, the A D A requirements?
I read Mr. Megga's comment and I'd like to express the word fact that the march pickup had been scheduled for an hour before the business was over. So from that point of view, it is highly unlikely that there will be any interference at all. But momentarily, using the portion of the access aisle next to the parking, the handycaps hall, to get the crash unit out before the business was over. In addition, we believe the 2010 A D A standard for access to the sign, what it clearly says is that the access aisle shall not allow the vehicle circulating in that direction where vehicles will constantly pass through. And it says it not confirmed. What I did confirm was that if an access aisle could be shared by two adjacent handycaps halls, but if sharing an access aisle with another handycap vehicle, one way or another to the other, to exit the apartment, but it will be this singular type of alpha influence of alpha to what we are.
But as previously stated, the pressure will be for our.
That's right.
Thank you.
Missures, any questions, Mr. Paul?
Yes, Gordon, can you just, I'm having a phone here tonight, can you just recount what's just happened here?
Mr. Paul has pointed out to us the changes in his major plans as a result of the acceptance of evidence in the past. That's where he's gone over, lateral detail. Adding the non-marking loading zone, answer questions to Mr. Megga's forms.
The conditions have been met?
That's up to us on the spot.
Any other issues?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the loading zone, does that extend out into the sidewalk itself? The loading dock or the loading zone, am I clear on that?
No, the loading zone would be in what would be the, in the parking lane, I never would.
So that would extend to the curb, that, that loading zone?
Next to the curb.
It would be marked on the main pavement, it's not like the street.
Yeah, it's like it gets painted in yellow, red, white.
And the curb there, that loading zone area would be moved?
Not necessarily, since it's only for small packages.
Says remove concrete apron and drop curb, provide concrete curb, that's why.
That's because there is a drop curb there now.
So you're going to?
And we always intended to close that curb that exists.
Then when a truck delivers there, you're gonna roll across the sidewalk to that gate.
Right.
And then going to the.
With a small entrant if needed, mostly, most of the time, no entrant.
Is that a usual situation for any other business in the city to have a loading situation where you have to cross a public sidewalk?
To make space away from usual. I have to admit that I get a lot of U P S deliveries on, a lot of U P S deliveries in my office on Moore Avenue, and they park right outside the door on Moore Avenue. Come in, drop it, and they're leaving in two seconds. And that's how it, that's how it is throughout, throughout the city.
You don't have a mark?
No, I don't, I don't have.
I believe I have a parking. Where your office slash home is, there's no parking for you.
No parking at all. There's a bus stop there, actually.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. Corner of Maggiara, Northern Maggiara, yes. Just a quick question, to get this loading zone, is that something we can plan? Something that you're gonna have to assume, counsel? Right, that's right. I believe so. You're gonna be in a public right, but H 14, proven, have some importance around the city, counsel.
Would be, would be a condition, maybe, of loading zone?
I do question if you're done.
Question, Mr. McNair?
Uh, regarding the garbage pickup, this would be on a typical week, six AM because it opens at seven. The garbage.
At the prior winter, we stipulated that it would not be opening until eight and that the trash pickups would be between seven and eight.
Seven and eight.
So that it wasn't too early and it would be before the business was actually open.
Okay. The other question, I'm trying to visualize this. How would the garbage pickup, would it go in, go around the facility and turn towards the dumpster? I'm just trying to see how it needs to do with this.
Uh, we have just made a little, little address that.
All right.
We do it now, as I have, I don't need to what turning rate is on site. That is a design review that we need to ask for. I think we submitted proof soon as to why the site doesn't fly thirty feet beyond site. And, uh, that's, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'll visit that issue.
Will, Mr. Chairman, will a garbage pickup occur every day or?
Now, previously submitted this schedule, it was, I think, twice a week.
Twice a week.
It's been a while since we've heard all this and over a little period, not the first lot of different things, so don't mind the questions.
No.
No, absolutely not.
Two times a week, two.
Tuesdays, right, that's weekdays, uh, and at seven o'clock in the morning.
Between seven and eight in the morning.
Well, I hope the residents that are joining, uh, private residents or early risers, uh, that's gonna create quite an amount of noise, garbage trucks and, uh, banging the back of the van and it has that beep, 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 when you're not, uh, I wouldn't want to be sleeping with that thing on that.
They're they're speaking a little bit more than that.
Well.
The noise was still carrying. The kind of, the other kind of trucks, are they the ones that come in front, lift up a container and then dump it into the truck?
That's something.
Kieran's previously submitted, did have a shuttle type truck being used front of the road. Front of the road. Which then lifts the can and dumps it into the truck. I've seen those trucks, I happen to see one every morning and the noise level that's created by the banging of that container that has the designated garbage, which was quite sufficient to wake up. Um, any other issues, any questions? Seeing none. Council, you have any questions, Mr. McNair?
Just a couple. Might please reenter their peers.
Michael Olivera, L I V E I R A, with firm Genova Burns, Giampa, Massey and Webster. In your plans, you reference, uh, reference to issues, uh, you put in that there is underground recycle wash water system. Sign on page three.
Yes, I only use grayboard for the purposes required.
Michael, can I ask you a question?
Do you miss what I?
I I ask a question, Mr. Cole, regarding, um, plans on page three. Make reference to a water, underground recycle wash water system. And I'm asking, uh, what is the intent of that area or that system? And what happens to the water that's collected from the car wash itself? There's nothing that I see in basic planes that we have that water is collected.
Well, if you refer to, um, on page three, it explicitly assess underground recycle wash waters. Wash water system can be designed shutty about us. I have not shutty about us. I is an architect who's not an expert in the underground recycling wash water system. And that would be a construction labor that would be taken on at a later time with appropriate assumptions.
So there's nobody here to give any information to the board with regard to how the waters can be collected from the car wash system?
The water from the car wash will go back onto that tank and rainwater will be transferred from these formal water detention systems onto that tank for like a minute. But other than that, can I explain exactly how that is going to wash?
Yes.
The water is filtered and and processes are taken out, thrown in the container, taken out for washing. That's my new technology. However, I I really do not see a requirement following the work of this nine day of charge media construction. I will and will be properly addressed when we go into the construction plan phase of this project and we hire and pay for the operation of the darkness to deal with.
Isn't that the decision?
To decide whether it's well discussed, to decide that why it needs to be what, what the neighbor concerns are. I don't think anyone who was here tonight is an expert in how an underground recycle wash water system works and to spend another minute of that is wasting the waste time.
Well, I'll waste more than waste time then.
Go ahead.
You you have in the fire department, the police department regulations, uh, concerned with regard to, uh, keeping Edgar Road, uh, so South Almora Avenue dry.
Dry, yes.
Dry.
From the police department.
He all want dry, yes, sir. And I'm asking you because I'm concerned that South Almora Avenue is not going to be kept dry. And that is a concern, I think, of this way.
I have seen that report from the police department, the police department is concerned about the water of South Almora. Do you have that in your work, sir?
Well, I think the extension of the concern, and I'm not gonna betray Mr. Council's question, would be if you're in the wintertime, you have water sheet flowing down onto South Almora Avenue. Are you gonna create a nice problem in wintertime operational conditions?
We have provided exonerated detention system, which consists of a trench drain on the driveway for South Almora Avenue. And that trench drain would collect any and all water that would be, uh, 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 shaded in the driveway. The majority would directly flow into the drain in the driveway. But it is still, uh, to be collected.
So, all right, so regarding this sheet, zero, three.
Really?
Could it be three?
Really?
So in other words, the slope of the line that's connected at the trench drain at the entrance is sloped back into the site into the dry well that's located, I guess, directly north of trench drain?
Correctly.
All right, totally right. This is one of the other end threat. All right, so all the drainage from the trench drain and the drainage of rainwater from the roof and the parking area will all be fed into.
Any, uh, any hole will then go out on the same road or way, catch base or some kind of water. That's as far as the exonerated water is concerned. Now, the water used in the car wash will include the wash water system and the recycle. And a portion of that will be, will be going into this water system.
Okay, that's the section you've laid to design by office.
Exactly.
Can I, can I lean into the record, what the council referred to, since I do not have it in my pocket? No, right. I do not know what the commissioners have. I was, uh, ten twenty-one thirteen, is a comment, uh, from the, uh, police department. Comment reads as follows, that there are provisions made to keep South Almora dry. Cars exiting leave a slick surface on the roadway. Can the vehicles possibly enter and exit on Edgar Road? Has MJVOT been consulted? That is the comment about the police department. And that report was not received. The one I received, that report was not received, uh, by me, the one I received today noted from the police department had no comment whatsoever on it. Another. But in any case, exactly, you probably need to place that in the meeting as well. This is, it's called the detention system that's on there. Mr. Cole, I think if you heard the comments that I followed, I didn't see that either. I came to see the, I spoke to the mayor and she told me that existed and I read. Um, the concern, as I understand it from the police record or the police department, is that if the vehicles leaving with their tires being wet from the car wash, it's gonna create a wet condition upon South Almora Avenue. That is not what we collect, like, uh, the drains. There is a difference, there is, let me just, there is a difference in the packet that has a different receipt date than the one I read. The police department not needed that one, that was, that had an error. The one, the one I got today was fine. That's, the other one is dated later and should have been in the packet.
The other one was received, this afternoon.
Again, we've got provided a stone water detention system from the very beginning. That vision has to be properly addressed, hard when they come out of these doors. The car wash to enter the final drying phase and any drops of water must hard which is the initial change drain before they exit the water.
But there won't be a resident, you know, when you go to a car wash, the ground is very slick from the capital. The churches and the ritz agents. I had my car washed yesterday, but my shoes are still, two days. You never wash your car?
I do. So I was, anything that that car threw across on was being dried on the drying phase. It's a, it was still, um, I mean, we go in there, there was water, can I call it? It was still.
This was a concern that was voiced, but was more several times asked in regards to that slickness that occurs at car washes and, and still has time to address. Okay. Just one other issue or point, on page, uh, six. You indicate, like, in your notes that there is. Wireless telephone communication apparatus?
No, I couldn't state that at all. It's like, if there's any apparatus on the, who would be here?
But they, they no specifically make reference to wireless telephone communication.
That is what the audience calls any apparatus, included those, no issue.
I don't know what was gonna be.
That's my question.
Do you know if they're. No, I don't know. That's, I don't. I just wanted to prove that anything that would be, you won't make it.
Understood.
Yes, Joseph Stiger?
Mr. Stiger, I want to give you the previous this morning call of life and raise your voice. Thank you.
Mr. Stiger.
Now, so.
Now, Mr. Stiger. I don't think that my. Share. Like, can you share with the board, Mr. Stiger's parties, who were directly involved with? First, I would say the gap study before.
Mr. Arby.
The gap study.
The whole state, go back and say the whole.
Could you please address the board, what have you done since you were last here? Uh, start again with the gap study before Mr. McNair's request.
Yes, I prepared a traffic gap study that drives, it's supposed to be by my location. And a gap study, um, well, the concern this year, the neighbor had was, was there sufficient gaps in traffic flow on South Almora Avenue to allow people to exit the site? And, um, the gap study is simple, we span the driveway and you go to stop watch and it's maybe a six and a half second gap in, in this case, would be westbound traffic of South Almora Avenue in order to make right turns and exit. So essentially, looking to your left, right turn, you have to need a six and a half second gap in time for what car passing through your position to a next vehicle passing through, uh, position. Um, if I was trying to exit the, uh, the car wash, um, and, uh, Mr. Vincent was right behind me trying to exit the car wash, the first car maybe would need six and a half second gap to follow time in three seconds. So for each additional car, in time that lift us back up, you need additional three seconds. So what we had done at that driveway and as I said, at the south, the turn, how many gaps in traffic flow, uh, there are in South Almora Avenue to facilitate those turn movements on exiting the site? And we took those, um, gaps counts, gap, gap surveys from eight to nine AM. Was that the time that this car wash would be open consistent with the heat hour of South Almora Avenue? Uh, and then between four and six PM, and we took those counts on Wednesday, October tenth of this year. And when we found that. Of time. It was, it was Wednesday.
It was Wednesday, maybe, and I, in fact, put your letters.
Okay, yep. Uh, yeah, and there's a typo, yeah, there's a typo on, on the chart that says it was on October. And, uh, what we found was that we able to process during the morning heat hour, uh, three hundred and forty-five right turns. And the reason being is that the traffic volume westbound of South Almora Avenue lower. During the afternoon, uh, a lot less, only only a little, a hundred fifty-seven right turn exits uh, out of the site, um, because of heavier volume, you know, on the west half of South Almora Avenue. We also did note and we observed that there were backups from the Litchwood Avenue and equalizing the section. Litchwood Avenue would turn red, cars would start to queue up and there would be a time period that it queued up across the driveway, light would turn green and each and every time, in the heat hours, the, uh, traffic flows, uh, traffic would be pretty light and they open up that, um, that area across the driveway. So what we found is that Litchwood Avenue single does block the driveway periodically when it turns red. Not certainly not anywhere near every recycle, not even most recycles. Um, but so it's not a chronic condition, we won't be absurd. The key factor though, that I'm pointing out, and I know Mr. McNair's concern, that if you have a constant flow of traffic trying to, uh, constant flow coming into the car wash, but nobody's leaving the site, well, then what's gonna happen is the car wash is gonna back up all the way from the exit driveway around through the car wash and around back down on South Almora Avenue. But if there's a queue across the driveway, um, such as blocks that drive light, then no one's coming into the site either, because there are huge amounts of blocking exit. It would also be interesting. So that's an inherent safety factor in terms of, of the, um, of the, um, I believe that the, uh, that that the building will back up. Certainly the gap study that we prepared further includes that, you know, back up. That certainly is sufficient to satisfy traffic gaps to allow the movement out of the site. As I said, like, uh, three hundred and forty-five right turns, the major is a twenty-three hour, a hundred and seventy, a thirty-two hour, and you anticipate a complete flow of the track of the car wash in thirty to forty, uh, vehicles per hour.
Now, to me to, uh, usually, my, there were names in that meeting?
Yes, I did, I, I attended the meeting. Yes, I did, I, I attended the meeting.
And were you involved in the, uh, design of the emergency access way?
Yes, yes.
Did you explain that to them?
Yes. The, um.
Now, is it an emergency access way? That's the word.
Four and a quarter.
Hold on, I'll tell you something. We put in a sign, we were resulting from that, we require officials, somebody who was discussing, just agree with us, Michael. And then there, most of the time, like, is there, is there?
Also, we use that area as well, but what else are you using it for?
If you listen. That's the one, it's so inconsistent, it's unbelievable. Go ahead.
We met, uh, Mr. Listy, the, uh, the city fire official, uh, to talk about a few things. And one was the, uh, the previous comment, we wanted to see a twenty-foot wide drive aisle around the building, uh, and that's required for, for the, uh, the national fire code for a fire lane. Uh, we explained to Mr. Listy that he could provide that. He further explained that it was something that he desires, but is not going to mandate to be required.
See, remember this board?
Uh, these fire officials made the comment that required. Um, so in, in essence, what he did was, he, he, uh, he said twenty was not. Um, we come on to explain that, that we were closing the end of the road driveway, uh, but we could provide a foot access for the fire, fire or other emergency, uh, access, not a vehicular access, you know, foot access. So that if there were a fire or some other emergency and emergency personnel needed access to the site via end of the road, they could use that access way in addition to the driveway on South Hill Avenue. Uh, he thought that was a good idea. And the way that we maintained that area to be open almost all the time was to make that existing driveway area that exists here today a loading zone. And you heard from Mr. Sportsley, uh, we're not expecting a whole lot of deliveries at this site. One delivery a month, uh, for, uh, for soap and products such as that, and, and a possibility of a U P S truck or a rail truck happening infrequently, not occasionally. So that loading zone area will certainly be open almost all the time. If there was an emergency, the place was on fire, certainly, I think the delivery main side would hang around, it's going to get back and strike the lead, and again, allow that loading area to be open as well, to then utilize as a possible entryway for foot emergency traffic. This loading zone, and I heard some comments, this loading zone is like parking spot. We're not, the truck is not parking or driving onto the curb. In fact, we're removing the existing curb, curb type of driveway this year, making it full face curb, uh, facing the sidewalk, so that it's a full sidewalk. So it's not going to look like a driveway. So all we're going to do is put a full face curb, but we will go signing, striking so that it's a loading zone. I don't know if the city has those types of, uh, designations along the curb line, but I've seen them in urban areas quite, quite often, uh, where you see two signs, loading zones, like pointing to each other, and there's a section of the curb line that's used for loading zones for properties, fit for that front, along that, that curb line. This is going to be an animal to that, it's going to be a loading zone that's going to be utilized for, for loading truck, only for that purpose. We're not using any parking on the street, it's right now it's a curb type, just converting that curb type and making it an area, and making it a loading zone for that truck. So it serves two purposes, the loading zone for the, for the, for the site, the infrequent occasion that, uh, truck, loading trucking access area, and secondarily for foot access to the site for emergency personnel and everybody. So that's, that's how we, that's how we can just make money in the, uh, the, uh, delivery aspect of the site as well as enhancing, uh, emergency response to the site as well. Uh, that's, that's really, and then, uh, Mr. Toll had talked about, uh, the, the non-spots and signage connections, regular paths and so forth that we discussed with Mr. Listy. So we're complying with, uh, whatever Mr. Listy has, uh, requests of us pursuant to the, the meeting that had.
Now, um, you have other questions? The, uh, the sentence is all about the slickness issue and the exit of the facility, uh, I think from there, that type of issue?
Yes, um, our, our car washes, we always have some undercarriage dripping that comes off the, uh, the car wash. And as you can see from the site plan, what we had provided is a trench drain, have, well, first of all, the plaque says curb, so the, any drainage from the site coming into the, uh, confines of the pavement within the curb area. But before any drainage would pour out towards Elmore Avenue, we searched about leaving the site, uh, near the sidewalk area of Elmore Avenue, there is a trench drain that, that crossed the whole length of the driveway. So anything that may be running towards the driveway, guards, traffic, or curbing in that area is caught by the trench drain and before reaches the sidewalk area or toward the pavement area of South Hill Avenue. That trench drain is tied into the drainage system, uh, and is conveyed underground through pipes off the site. So there's not going to be any, um, wet drainage, certainly not all of our property, made by the car wash.
Any of that water heading up to this, are you aware of the water recycling?
No.
But so what's recycling here?
That's recycling only wash water of the car wash.
Second water that's drinking off the cars?
No, that's, well, inside the building, when you're washing a car, there's, there's drainage inside the building that is what is collected. Once you leave the building, then that system does not collect any water. So there is going to be some drippings and that's all of it, some drippings off from the undercarriage, uh, that may, that is, I now have the exit, outside exterior of the building, but as an exit point.
Then I misunderstood, Mr. Toll, uh, when you said that some of the stormwater protection system water would be shared in the underground, uh, recycled system. Just move water?
Yes.
Disunderstood.
The trench drain is on fire, it's recycling.
But that's still, I understand what you pointed out, I had a question about the slickness. There's still slickness because the fires, they are not, and they are not going to drip into the trench drain, they are going to carry out onto the street. The police department's concerned about that slickness, is there any way, does it get washed down, you know?
Well, what happens, the, the car is going to, um, travel that relatively long distance, I'll say forty feet by time it gets to the car, uh, trench drain. At that point, it might be damaged, not slickness.
Car wash that I referred to earlier, that's about a forty, fifteen foot drive from the car wash to the curb and the street outside that car wash is slippery. It's, it's a natural hazard for car washes to carry out, revenue, oils, waxes, whatever goes on that car wash. Makes for a slippery situation.
The, uh, current pricing, certainly during those very old days, if they had this type of situation, they may have to be sold at that price.
Does the trench drain step flush to the entrance?
It's set flush to the, uh, yes, the pavement.
Why?
Actually, um, bend it a little bit so that the water drains into it, but it's flush, essentially flush to the pavement and, and it's a low flow of water, it's not very.
Sure. Next question, uh, if there are any regulations?
Yes.
Uh, could you, uh, justify the reiteration of your department's thought?
Well, there is a, uh, any regulations, uh, require an eight-foot area, right, in addition to the, for being accessible part, you should.
I'm sorry, sir. No, I was saying, you're going away from the.
The, uh, any requirements are an eight-foot wide parking space with eight-foot wide stripe area that's accessible for maneuverability by someone who is, um, who, who usually handles that space. Uh, and maybe a portion of that striped area that's utilized for the, uh, access to the garbage. Uh, I don't think from a practice standpoint, that's a problem because the garbage can be shown up prior to the, uh, car wash being open and should be known at work on the, uh, in, in, in that space. And that's just from a practice standpoint. But mind you, the A D A requirements, so no, uh, regulations or limitations of that area being used by picking up garbage or, or temporarily used by vehicles. I see many designs similar to this, where you have that space is actually located in front of the garbage pickup area. In this case, the vehicle itself will not be located, only portion of the striped area. So my, my opinion, to your opinion, is that this was the A D A requirements.
Is that?
This design complies with the A D A requirements.
Okay. Good question. I had a question, Mr. Toll, earlier in regards to the no left turn sign.
Oh, yeah. Which, I have.
I refer to A zero-two. There is, there is one more D at the bottom of the building, it's a site plan paving. That sign wasn't drawn, it was facing the wrong direction.
There's going to be, there's going to be a double sign. It'll be facing the driveway, so that usually the, the driveway, we see, we don't have no left turn sign. But what we, what we're providing is one that's going perpendicular to that. So it'll be a sign facing this way, a sign facing a driveway.
And the one that may be across the street at the driveway, I think, you know, the wall side, that's the exit sign. If you're going to turn into the entrance, try to make a left turn, you're going to pass that sign before you.
Oh, okay. Well, uh, we.
If that vehicle would be traveling this way, to turn here, the sign is there, that's not going to be missing.
What we're proposing, uh.
Should be, there should be a double sign on the G if you have no left turn sign.
Well, typically, wait, is that, it seems like it allows a stop sign or a no left turn sign.
Stop sign from your.
Or property, that's going to allow us to put a, typically will allow us to put a, a no left turn sign. And, and the, the no left turn sign is, is located above the stop sign, that's, that's typical design, and I know you want that.
So the stop sign is facing the inside, inside property, and the no left turn sign is facing that?
No, no, there, no. At, at the driveway location, interior of the site, there will be a stop sign, a no left turn sign facing on the interior of the site.
So this, this no left turn sign has to do with coming out of the site?
That's correct.
That's what I was told. Okay. So what is the stop sign coming down South Hill Avenue, literally, and wanting to make a left turn into the site? Just the sign?
No, there's going to be a double sign, it, it's not shown on the property. That sign, that, well, actually, that sign's going to remain, so that, that's. Yeah, as you think it's like, you're going to see the stop, the stop sign, and no left turn sign in the property, like, you're also going to have that one in the face, one that's on the other side of, of, of Elmore Avenue.
And there will also be another one facing the traffic.
Yes.
One that's perpendicular to the, destroying, destroying incorrectly.
Yeah, but the other side has to be in, that's perpendicular to that side, facing east bound.
Just, just to clarify something, are, are vehicles proceeding toward the midway circle allowed to turn left into the car wash?
No, that's.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, I understand.
But that's what I was saying. They're not allowed to turn left coming out of the.
The driveway will be a right turn in, right turn out, no left turn.
Can I go to your minutes of the meeting with the fire official?
Yes.
I had number three, the applicant who provided access gate, you'd be locked, breakaway chain handled or locked in the fence along the road. That's what the applicant wanted.
So the, uh, well, he, he didn't care whether we locked it or we didn't lock it. He said, we're going to, I'm thrilled, we're going to bust that door down no matter what. So.
But that door, that door is also the door for.
Right, so we're not going to lock it. So that, that will change.
Would you prefer, would you prefer to a conversation with Mr. Listy that, uh, the twenty-foot fire line is international fire code?
Well, if, if it's designated as a fire lane, that fire lane has to be twenty. Uh, we're not designing, designing that area in the back as a fire lane. Um, he retracted his requirement or, or suggestion that it needs twenty. He said, if you could provide something, we'd be delighted. If you provided, we understand, we wouldn't drive, we wouldn't bring a fire truck back there anyway if something's on fire, distracted.
Yep.
Commissioners, questions?
Yes, gentlemen, I have a, the question of the gap study, uh, you're, you're the expert here, but, uh, how, how valid are these findings in your experience when, in, in a real world situation, in a, 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 in a , how, how valid will it, will it prove to be from your calculations? Were you saying, uh, car seconds to exit the, the driveway and getting the outgoing traffic, merge into the?
You need the first car, and if, if we, we position it that I'm the first car and Mr. Vincent's the next car, behind me, and you're the third car, behind me, I need six and a half second gap, uh, to get out. As Mr. Vincent, as I pull, pull out and Mr. Vincent pulls in, there's another six seconds, so now there's nine and a half second gap in traffic, then we both can leave. Then if there's another twelve and a half second, another three seconds, twelve and a half second gap, then all three of us will be able to exit out of the site. So you need six and a half seconds for the first car and three seconds for each follow-up vehicle.
To, to exit within the same gap?
Yes, to exit within the same gap.
Does that prove to, to hold up in a real world situation? I mean, is that, are those statistics valid?
Yes.
And, and, and I, no, I take into account, uh, you know, the type of driver, there are some curious drivers, some are not, some will let you make a turn, some will let you in, some will, and some will, will, will be right in front of the driveway where they stop, they will give you the space, because that happens on the, the, is that a part of the calculation?
If you can, if I have stop watch here, and, and you can imagine yourself at a stop sign, and I give both six and a half seconds, nor really is it a long time here, that's a very disturbing. If you drive in New Jersey, people always dart in front of you.
Yeah, I know.
They're doing four second gaps and three seconds.
So the three seconds is not the time that would be allowed for a car to leave the driveway and merge into the traffic? Are you saying three seconds would be enough?
Six and a half seconds is what's required. However, if there's another car behind that car, the first car needs six and a half second gap. I need to see that, that, I need to see down the road, six and a half seconds away, and that's, and that's, that's based on the travel speed of the roadway, but I need that, that's, that gap, or maybe a right turn out of the site. If you were behind me, right, I need that six, six and a half seconds, but if there's another three seconds in addition to that six and a half seconds, or nine and a half seconds, between when one car passes and the next car passes, then we both can leave. So six and a half seconds for the first one, and then three seconds for each additional in that same gap of traffic.
That's a busy, busy problem. It's easy, it's crazy.
But that's, that's what you physically measured out of the field.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman?
Yes, uh, you know, I, I've seen a listener to, uh, report on the, uh, the fire lane. Very disturbing. And I, I heard just going about perhaps the fire department saying it doesn't need be twenty feet of ready. We have an engineer here, we, we, we. We have an engineer here, we, we rely greatly on that. To honor consultant, Victor Renee. As we reported, not even a rescue vehicle will be able to get around this building. I have concern about that. Yes, we have apparatus in the fire department that can fight fire from a distance. Because we try to obtain the best apparatus we can for firefighting to work. But for a rescue vehicle, not be able to get in around it. When someone injured, or there's a life and death situation, I have a problem. We talked about no parking lot zone. I, I can probably live with it a little bit. I heard testimony about a breakaway, correct me if I'm wrong, breakaway chain. Did I correct someone?
They testified that they have a judicial idea, they have a legal open.
Yeah, they do. So I'm, I'm concerned about the security.
I assume they can block it.
I don't want to assume, because you're gonna say about assuming. Uh, so we're gonna dig up.
Even if it's a period, but even if you lock that the main entrance to the car wash has no gate closing in it now, so it's wide open.
It's open, it's wide open. Until I'm very good and satisfied, how we're gonna be getting around getting a rescue vehicle, I have a concern. And I've heard the second one, counsel, saying he testified his concern. I have concern, and I thank most of my colleagues here at this council. We wanna help them as much as possible can. But when you fight an uphill battle, it's very difficult. And we've been here for months now. And it's all drawn out. I don't have any more, we're just going to testify.
We're sharing this.
I, I don't have much to testify, we are here, having all the pain we have for this too. Uh, hopefully that will give, eventually soon, somehow back it up. Cut to some, because it may revise several times. Uh, and hopefully we don't have to go back and revise again to make it accessible for rescue vehicle to get around the vehicle. I repeat, and I rely on Mr. Renee, Mr. Renee, uh, as a ready, as a pointer. And all food and water, as, as concerned and not just the outcome. Uh, and just got a problem. And I listened to testimony, had a testimony. And, and I want to help in the, make it possible. But, but if you got uphill battle, then you, you need to.
Want to help them make it possible?
For, to help them as much we can, to make it possible, they can. But we got, they seem like we got uphill battle, uphill battle, seem like they're going to get to, not getting to top of the hill, so they go. So that's my, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other questions, Commissioner? If not, I'm very ready for you, you do, sorry.
I have another question. As regards to the, the garbage pickup, there's this implication as to, um, a garbage truck twice a week, and it can also start on the end. And the traffic, um, queues and stuff was done, was done into the agency in the morning. And we all know what the traffic is, but what's out of work to seven A in the morning. So just very concerned about the traffic, the garbage trucks between those hours of seven A for those two days, and then the traffic pattern those two days.
Well, the gap study was prepared to, to make sure that vehicles, car wash vehicles could exit the site. And if, so we started at eight, did it from eight to nine AM, because that's when the car wash would be operating, open. That's when vehicles will be coming in and leaving. Earlier than that, the car wash is closed, it'll only be the garbage truck that would show up.
Earlier than that, between seven and eight, the kids are coming through school up the street and around the corner.
Right.
School starts at seven thirty.
Right.
So that's a concern, Commissioner. I give us, and lots of school.
So the buses are parked there around seven.
Lots of school.
And, and that, and, and originally, the application was to open this car wash at seven AM. We heard that concern from the public, from the commissioners, and we were amenable to condition on opening the car wash at eight AM. So we, we delayed, we opened it. As a concern that, that the garbage truck twice a week, but with, is that a concern the garbage? So it's one vehicle twice a week. I mean, there's, there's thousands of vehicles, thousands of people coming into the road.
Commissioner, Commissioner, I thought you were.
Well, I, I understand, I, 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 I didn't, I didn't mean to downplay the, the concern, but I think it's, I, I think it's a valid concern. It, it is one of the garbage.
An additional question regarding that garbage truck. It enters from South Elmore Avenue, that is a rule, and not for to turn around, it doesn't have to back out of the premises.
It will, it'll, it'll front, it'll front load, it'll pull the garbage forward directly. Then it'll, it'll more or less a K turn in the site, back out, uh, to the, to the driveway off. And, uh, the loss between the car wash and saying, and South Elmore Avenue, and then front out of the site.
And it's working out for that number?
Yes. And, and, and the reason being is that the car wash is closed and no other.
No, I understand that, but is the rule of just the driveway configured for that number?
Absolutely, yes. So it'll be, it'll be a front, it, we're not backing out of it, across the sidewalk or onto South Elmore Avenue.
Any other questions? I'm gonna suggest that five of them says, and this Olivera, if you have other questions for this witness, you can come up with.
Thank you, sir.
As soon as everybody settles down, Mr. Olivero. Okay, now, for me, let's go.
Mr. Snyder, your testimony stated that the proposed emergency road driveway, existing in, exit road driveway is, is accurate. So that the perp owner, that it won't be a driveway area?
Correct.
So if an emergency vehicle were impacted into the site, it could not use that driveway?
That's correct.
So if there were an injury, somebody would have had a heart attack, something along those lines on the property? Is your testimony that the emergency vehicle would park in this loading zone proposing, and the emergency personnel would have to walk out of the site?
Now, uh, they could, they could, but they also entered the site, and then, uh, as an emergency, they could K turn into the site, just because the garbage truck would or, or they could.
It's, it's a, a fire truck, the garbage truck is coming when nobody's on the program. And when you, if you're, the car wash is full, but we need an emergency vehicle to enter, it could.
Well, it could enter the site where, uh, driveway would be free and clear and open. Depending on the, depending on the driver.
Depending on the queue.
Yeah, if the queue won't extend out into the driveway.
That's your testimony. And there's no area, because you have driving, you have to be with cars as well, so even if there were one car, it would be blocking.
Well, if an emergency situation comes up and you have to clear the area, the tenants will be out there driving the area, and have this public, we'll give you a free car wash next time, now that.
And, and hopefully they're not the person that had an argument, because that time would be wasted. Um, if I could, uh, you're also, there's also no area planned for a fire truck to enter on those sites.
That's correct.
So they would have to remain on the street and carry, or, 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 that grass onto the site.
Which is the typical, um, center areas.
Um, we're going down to the South Elmore driveway. There's, you're proposing a no left turn sign in that driveway, right? And so maybe you just, A.
Yes.
Is this a municipal sign, or this is just something that? Does that, does it have to force the law?
We're willing to grant the city Title Thirty Nine rights to enforce those types of numbers.
So have any conversations with the municipality or, or?
No. We can enforce it, to accept it, but we're willing to, we're willing to.
There's also no physical barrier that will deter you from making a left hand turn out of the site, right?
Correct.
We have nothing, I, I, as I understand, in the latest revised plans, there is a striped yellow orange job kind of thing that kind of indicates people should, but there's no physical barriers.
That's correct, and that is based on our meeting with DOT, that they do not want to see any physical curb.
Understandable. So there's no real physical barrier stops someone from making a left hand turn out of it?
No, it's not, it wouldn't be designed either. Always, no matter what you do, you can still be able to make a left turn and physically be able to left turn.
Even if it forced the law.
Now, you're also proposing a no left hand turn sign on the opposite side of South Elmore Avenue, is that correct?
Correct.
Has that been, for you, approved by the municipality, I assume that's a part of this?
Um, that's, that's not gonna be on private, well, that's gonna be part of our DOT, DOT writer, the DOT approval, the sign on the right.
I would imagine also the municipality approval to put on the street, the sign.
Well, second approval here at the city.
I don't believe they have the right, they don't have the right.
Signs that, 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 the council will give. Signs, yeah. For us, actually.
Well, I, I think that the, the protocol is that we put sign up, whether the city dots a corner, it's enforced it.
You don't want that preference, actually.
No, DOT owns it.
DOT goes on the sidewalk.
Oh, I, lay on the right away between the sidewalk and the curb. And then, and we're putting, we do something, we could put a, we could put anything in state right away, I need DOT approval.
Aren't signs typically put on the sidewalk?
I never seen a sign, I, you, you don't put a sign on the sidewalk, you put it.
Well, these are, you'll put it on the road, you put it on the sidewalk.
Put it typically between the sidewalk and curb, like grass area or, or paper area.
I believe that's fine.
Well, they'll put it, they'll put it on the lost side of the curb, not in the middle of the sidewalk, if somebody's not backing, so we're gonna put along the curb line, and we're just inside, inside the curb line, and almost through the municipal power, not from DOT. Doesn't work, the right, the market.
Somebody has to approve this, and perhaps two, two different entities have to approve this, and neither one has achieved the intent.
Correct.
So, um, there's really nothing that will hinder or stop somebody from leaving the site and making a left hand turn on the South Elmore Avenue.
That's correct.
If you conduct.
Well, other than someone's conscience or possibility of intending of disobeying the law, or breaking the law.
You're making the assumption that it's been approved for the sign.
Oh, I see, I'm making that assumption, by force of the law.
The, uh, you conducted the gap study, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And when you conducted your gap study, did you take into account people making left hand turns on the South Elmore Avenue?
No.
So would that affect the, the timing of these gaps?
Yes, sir. You, you'd need a longer gap than the local directions, as opposed to shorter gaps or one direction.
So if several cars are to make left hand turns on the South Elmore Avenue, would the results of the gap study be inappropriate in the role?
That could be right.
It could be, if everybody could make a turn.
No, it could be right, even if, uh, some, by some, some people make left hand turns, maybe there aren't over seven second gaps.
But you didn't make any calculations which would guide people making left hand turns?
No.
Um, you're proposing a no parking loading zone on any road, is that correct?
Yes.
We're going to go back again to municipal approvals of this proposal. Has anybody spoken to the municipality about obtaining the rules necessary for this loading zone?
That's my understanding.
And what would happen if the municipality said, for some reason, whether it's the children in the school, that's the proximity area, but for some other reason, we don't want to have this loading zone? What would you have to do, and throw back this?
I still saw this.
Um, you stated in your testimony that there will not be that many deliveries. I think you said that perhaps it'll be one month.
Uh, the soap products, uh, Mrs. Sportsman's, uh, the operator, that was his testimony, once upon.
What's, what's you and I going to do then?
It's, it's, his testimony was right, professional. I think it's once in a while that a van show up and concentrate the site. I believe his testimony also said that he would go and bring it up his own vehicle.
So, let's go. Um, i- if we're going to have deliveries once a month, is it your testimony that there's enough, that enough to be delivered once a month, that the soap products necessary to operate, the, the armor roll, the, uh, the materials that are used in to sell, the coffee and the donuts, et cetera, are, are these gonna be separate?
They're in the office.
I think there's something along the lines of food.
I think we proved that, because it's all testified, and you wrote.
I, but, but, but let's stick to the products used in the car wash itself. And they could be, they could be delivered to you once in a month? That would be present.
A high press, I, this is.
Well, that was, that's only earlier, if you want, we can have.
I, I, I refer to Mrs. Sportsman's testimony, that he's.
Well, I, I guess my concern is that we have this proposed parking loading zone, and we're making one delivery a month, it seems impossible to make a, a small truck like that, whether it's a van or a smaller truck, it would have to be something larger, because these soap materials are different in large trucks. Do you have any?
I don't know, like, I don't, I don't know how.
I, I can have this, one of my kind who operates a car wash, a test, play, that's a, but let's stay, and, um. Lastly, has there been any changes with regard to the proposed queuing on the site?
Any changes?
In these revised plans, because it's still your testimony that seven cars can queue.
What does seven cars?
And how does that?
Uh, there is seven cars can queue within the single lane, and there is an auxiliary lane that can be used as a safety queuing area or whatever makes you. But in order to certainly totally obviate any possibility of queuing out of South Elmore Avenue, there is that second queuing lane.
And your, I, I guess your belief that those spaces are sufficient, and you would disagree both with the traffic engineer that testified we have at the objective, and also the traffic engineer that presented reporting.
Um, what was the question?
Yours was saying that it has sufficient queuing. That testimony from the traffic engineer of the objective, it says that twenty-two queuing spaces would be needed. You have the testimony from the, um, this traffic engineer retained by the municipality, it says fifteen to twenty spaces would be needed. And I'm asking you for the security, if you're assessing.
I don't recall that testimony. I don't remember, I don't recall anybody's testimony saying that twenty-two and fifteen to twenty spaces are needed.
We, we keep holding up where we can check and try to swear.
But I disagree with you. I, and I think it's a cautious question.
I was.
I disagree.
I believe that, Mr. Snyder.
Mr. Vincent?
Mr. Snyder, thank you. I mean, we call you the next.
Mr. Vincent? Ray Parker.
Mrs. Parker, I'm running in, you've previously qualified, you remain sworn under.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes, Ray Parker. Mr. Parker.
Mr. Parker, the director of extensions, who, who's been here since recently, for... Yeah, you have a voice on the side where you're regarding, uh, having thirty-eight-foot torque radiators, that's correct. Can you address that, where you were depending on the location?
Well, I had a little, uh, categorization on the site, and based on the ordinance that was found, I know that the drive by, between the, uh, street line, uh, ten feet from the street line, and when you're drive by, along Southern Florida, and on the back lot line where the school is, uh, there are two cars that have three-foot, uh, space between the drive by and, uh, the proper line on that side. There's, by my calculations, ninety-one feet on the front park line, the rear park line, if you take ten feet off of that, you're eighty-one feet. If you take three more feet off, you're down to eighty, or seventy-eight feet. Um, do a thirty-eight-foot outside radius, and you would need seventy-six feet to make the turn, and you actually have to make two of those turns to make a full circumference of the site. If you lay out to the outside thirty-eight foot, and the inside twenty-four radius, as required by ordinance, there's no room to develop anything on the side.
So you just testified that the size of the location doesn't work?
You couldn't decide to make your orders, no matter what you did.
Okay.
There's, there's no, there's no ability, the local area remaining if you met the orders.
If it were a car?
No, nothing.
Not here with you?
It requires thirty-eight-foot radius.
That's, that's if you should have circulation around the building you were planning with it, but if you put a building there, let's say for instance, a dump in donuts, doesn't need circulation around the building, does it?
It's likely to work, that's why it's thirty-eight-foot radius. So thirty-eight-foot radius around the site.
So in essence, what you're testifying again, the word you mouthed, you didn't manage to apply, is that this is a non-billable site.
Based on your requirement of that thirty-eight-foot?
Based on ordinance, that's correct.
And that's the parking lot you have there. That's why I should obviously do all this. Now, Mr. Parker, um, if you will have a testimony, if you side away from thirty-foot radius, just one?
Absolutely, uh, based on the, the, this, this, this park, being the site that we provided a, a way for the park on the site, and get the people in and out of the site, we provide the loading zone, uh, a gravity, for the small amount of workers that have been made to the site, um, I think that the site has, that's the intent of the, of the ordinance in that it's providing community use. These are design reactors that are asking for, for the terminal radius, and we saw the other one, it's with the parking space, but the, the loading zone off-site is a bonus, and I think that, uh, it's a very good use of that portion of the gravity. It's not directly being used for parking, it's directly accessible to the site, and it doesn't impact anyone on the gravity, nor does it impact anything on-site.
And, uh, looking back on the whole testimony with types of deliveries, uh, is this on this site, is it truly necessary that an onsite, or onsite large loading zone?
The, uh, the, the, the sites are not a, a, for example, plastic drum, which can easily put on a hand truck and brought in with the site. I, I don't know, the concentration of the materials isn't, uh, the time that, that lasts, but I assume that you're going to do car washes, uh, and saying in, in their supply rooms, it's like a thirty-gallon plastic drum.
I was about to add that the entire testimony, Mr. Sportsman, it does stipulate, so it raises a much smaller details, and that's why I think it's sufficient.
I'm sorry, sir.
And that's why I think it's sufficient, because testimony was, they were smaller, they came as five or ten gallons, everything is included on-site, so it doesn't have to break the large drums of ready-to-use materials. Uh, can you take that, a, a comment, last meeting regarding the size of parking stalls that were already empty, that was designed, I don't know, as you mentioned, but, uh, in that type of parking space, is it then required, say sufficient?
The, the standard, as the standard is the, the, first standard for a parallel parking space is eight by twenty-two. I believe your ordinance is designed primarily for a, a, a sole parking, which is fully parking, so that that space between the cars, art from outside to the other, we don't have that situation here, we have cars that are parallel parking, on-site of the building, and it won't make a bit of difference, uh, with the parking spaces being empty or nine empty twice, with the accessibility of the parking in that space, because it's no car that's going to chase into it. So no purpose, uh, side purpose that I can see for a nine-man parking stall, or a parallel parking, if we're in a man parking, in a fifteen-twenty parking, or a nine, or a ten, I can see the ability of the required.
And, uh, there's also, just very much in America, I had, uh, noted that, uh, various where you were for illumination issue, but that means that by shielding, we will not have that.
I'm sorry?
That by shielding, we will not have illumination over still, right? We, we put the back shields on, uh, oil lights all the time, every manufacturer has a back shield in these plates, some of these towns have, your, your progress, you can have any light, plus the, the problem, you have to, you have to, uh, shield the lights, and like you say, every manufacturer that I go, that back shield. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Commissioners, questions for this witness? Is there a question?
No questions.
No questions. I, I just have one question, it's not necessarily for this witness, we can, we can go through back, uh, there is on page six, at the top of the page, illuminated business sign, I don't remember any testimony to how bright that sign is going to be, the information that's on it, is that the, the business sign that says, "Cavallo, more car washes on this site"? How would Mr. Parker, Mr. Charlie, come back up?
Just to take a clarification, Mr. Chair. Uh, the engineer testified that, that we were, uh, that the site was available, but if you didn't have a rear driveway behind the building, you wouldn't have the issue, how will you use it in the water? So here's why, because you had a rear facility that would back up against the property. You would have stayed, you haven't had the circulation to begin.
The circulation requirement that you refer to, that I refer to, is because you have a car wash, there's circulation around it. If you had a dump in donuts, you didn't need, you would not seem to have circulation behind the store.
How would you get the, I guess, your thirty-four, you didn't have the same?
From the front. If this was set back, it would be...
The side of the main hall, you'd be...
You don't need for this.
Well, we, we don't have another site to look at.
I'm not, I'm not deciding if that's something else, you're designing for the car wash, I'm intending that that could be something else, and I do not intend that to be it. Mr. Todd, page six, with the South Elmore Avenue Car Wash, illuminated business sign, can you tell me whether there were other signs?
Yeah, we, we want, yeah, we do this sign, so we're in the area, it depends on the brightness, or if we recess lighting to increase the whole, and, uh, see there are, uh, okay, but again, flash, I think.
Would be a testimony that these signs would be fully balanced with city words?
I double-checked, I'm sure, the sign, the sign dimensions in your board. I double-checked the sign dimensions, that they do meet our ordinance.
Do meet our ordinance, but we're left to one, we're left to the right, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Vincent, do you have a closing statement?
First of all, very much thank you for sharing your all the plans, for the many months that we've come back, I don't think that it's all good, but there's actually, as we use some, they have been, they serve, uh, each step of, we're always trying to make a better application. Back in the first part, this process way back, uh, to the choose on the side, we need this sort of, because it's too much. And each time, we have comments, and we've had a question, we've had a thought, to address those comments, and that's why we have the reasons every time, not because we're trying to add anything to the site, we're trying to reword from it, to all the gentleman parts. Ultimately, down to forming site plan, or the, 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 the not happening, the full-size, the contract, and the, and the, on the, on the, on the we have, uh, great length, which create, create alternative avenues, reverse access, with the deliveries that are going to this site, the testimony is very clear, really rare measure of the deliveries, small lines of the deliveries, uh, van, anything, we all require, so, as I say, but, should we, we just, uh, kind of, on life, somebody's in, or if you ask, we now accommodate that by taking the whole solar light, or, or, or when, 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 when,
Um, I think that we really didn't address the federal requirement regarding the location of the baby at park this day. With regard to issues with traffic, I think that there's sufficient doubt here that this area can handle any more existing traffic or additional volume of traffic on South Side of Manhattan. Um, and it certainly, I didn't hear anything in anybody's testimony that said that additional traffic could not be generated as a result of this application. Despite Mr. Spider's, uh, statement, I think you have the testimony of both the traffic engineer that was obtained by the applicant, I'm sorry, the contractor, and also the traffic engineer obtained by the city that states that there simply isn't enough queuing or waiting area on this site to accommodate the needs or what ordinarily would be needed for the car wash in this place. Would you add to that the safety concerns of the police, uh, department with regard to the, um, possible slickness of South Side of Manhattan, which is a busy, congested, um, thoroughfare? I, I think you, you see that there are manual measures that have been put into place to, uh, protect the safety of, uh, people in the area, most importantly, the children at the school. For all these reasons, I would request that this board denies this application.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any comments regarding this application yourself? Please come forward. Seeing none. Commissioners? If you're full of voices, can you vote for it? May I have a motion?
I'm going to let him speak at the same time. Mr. Chairman, uh, I want to go through the whole, uh, the whole, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Close the camera.
Yeah.
I want to go through the whole, uh, testimony on day one. But I can recall first starting with this application. I myself personally asked a question, how many cars could be washed and dry in a given time for a time there? First, there was inconsistent testimony, I would say, because I can't recall once in a while. It was like one minute, three minutes, two minutes, and they kept changing, time for time. And for that, they, we are out of the group level. We revisit, we revise the plan again. We talk about the fire act, about getting in and out. We talk about the fire danger, we talk about that. We talk about load zone, time for time, and time for time, on and on and on. And I think we have a veridiction, we listened to it very carefully. Uh, we heard from the, this, the city council for this board queuing. And, uh, he gave his testimony, how, uh, his field of opinion. Although that does not drive me, and certainly I don't think, uh, the commissioners here. Uh, because we have a line of alone individually.
We have what?
A line of alone individually. So, uh, but the way the applicant has, uh, presented himself, going back and forth to revise the plan, he has a one day to go back again. And I think it's been almost seven months until, until we have the ready to close. So with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would make a motion that, that this application be denied. Uh, because it, it's just like having a, uh, a twelve-foot feet and you're trying to put a fifty-foot size of pen. I'm sorry, I, 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 a twelve-foot feet and trying to put a fifty-foot size of pen in. And I'll refer to, uh, the statement that although the government is offended for this uh, when John Carter said to, uh, OJ's, uh, to Jules, uh, the double thing must win. So when that statement denied, make a motion to deny this application. Thank you.
Someone's taken that motion.
I second it.
That was chairman, it was. I'm going to ask, any of the commissioners have any comments that they'd like to get into the record regarding this application before I vote for vote? Give them the opportunity. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like also, I would place in there that there is one variance that doesn't exist on this application. Uh, there's a number of design waivers, but the loadings, um, on our section seventeen point forty point zero two zero requires at least one all three loading space. That is a variance, not a waiver. Which two, if, for, remember waivers are just, well, within the design section of the ordinance. So the circulation and the parking sizes are called waivers. More serious, I, like a zoning section, those are variants. So this application does require very variants and not supplying a full-size onsite loading zone. Uh, this is where I think there should be required suspense.
The, the, uh, things that concern me in addition to what's been stated is, yes, the trash truck comes twice a week. But the noise level that I hear every day from a similar kind of truck, I wouldn't want to live within twenty feet, thirty feet of that. That's one thing. I know that's not a variance, but that's one of the things I learned twenty-one years ago when I joined this board is, you've got to look at this if you live next door to it. And if I lived next door to it, I would be quite upset by that kind of noise. The loading dock that Mr. Van Eker pointed out, to me, the circulation pattern just does not work on this site. And despite the fire officials' comments and, uh, concession that he didn't need twenty feet, he is not a member of this board, and one of the things that this board stands by in every one of the cases that I've heard in the twenty-one years, we watch out for our fire department and their safety. And this site is not a safe site for fire. And those are the reasons that I would concur with what has been proposed. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I listened to all this testimony too, and I have read the transcript word for word. Um, I see very little that recommends this. We have heard over these past months a steady mixture of confusion, obfuscation, dissembling, and double talk. Testimony has been at various times incorrect, inconsistent. And has been at various times incorrect, inconsistent, and conflicting. Every meeting, we've learned something different that we didn't know. Uh, there was a basement, there wasn't a basement, there was a basement, there two people working, seven people working, the cashier would go out and wash the car, there was a problem. They'd be crossing schoolchildren at three o'clock, one of the workers go, we, we've heard things from the normal to ridiculous, uh, and I, I see very little to, to recommend this at this stage. I'm sorry to say that.
Anyone else for a call vote? Do you have votes to be voted on?
Right, just let me ignore you. The motion is a motion to deny. If you wish to deny, you vote yes. If you wish not to deny, you vote no. Mark a political roll.
Anthony Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner Zunitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Shawcross?
Yes.
Secretary Marvin Irving? Commissioner Rivera?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Vice President Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Ross?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Workers.
Uh, I would issue a convention, um, I would hope that some of you commissioners will be in right of sitting to the courses that are required of us, uh, during the municipal, uh, the, 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 uh,
Can I ask the members before the police stay at the moment, once the room is empty and, uh,